Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is August 13th. We are in the Olentangie Administrative Offices. And tonight is a regular Board of Education meeting. So, Mrs. Hatfield, would you please call the roll? Mr. King?
Present.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Here.
And Dr. Weiss?
Here.
Thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Allow entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, please call the roll. Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. And joining us this evening is Joe Swazey. He is our Director of Safety, Security, and Preparedness. Welcome to the podium. Mr. Swazey.
Good evening, and thank you all for allowing me an opportunity to give an overview of the past year's Safety, Security, and Preparedness program. I want to say especially thanks to Dustin and Lamont from Technology Tonight, because without them, I probably won't be able to get through this presentation. So, before I start, an update from last year's presentation. As you may know, the levy caused us to push back the safety vestibules that we had planned to get partially completed this summer of 2020, and then totally completed next summer of 2021. I do believe the board was updated by Mr. Gordon that we will attempt to get all of the schools' safety vestibules completed in an aggressive schedule next summer. Just wanted to highlight some of the partner engagement platforms I'm associated with. I know Mr. Rafe constantly talks about our value of partnering at school and in the community, and that couldn't be more true for me. Those are just a highlight of some of the organizations and associations I'm with. The Parent Programs Team, Safe Team Drivers with Jackie Bain from Delaware County Health. And, okay, into the Preparedness portion. Now, really Preparedness is the only thing we can control. So, how do we go about doing that? I was fortunate to apply for and get a, this is the second year in a row, an Attorney General's Grant to help us with offset some of the costs of our programs this past year. We started out last summer. I took majority of the school resource officers to the National Association of School Resource Officer Training, which really is the gold standard in the country. And the two school resource officers who couldn't make that, the grant money paid for their attendance at the Ohio School Resource Officer Training. And then I started the year by reorganizing the Superintendent Safety Committee, and I included a new building security design because of all the upcoming construction we have, and a training subcommittee. So, one of the projects we looked at in this new building Securities Design Committee, so I have a couple of experts in the field who are on my safety committee, and we got together and I shared with them the plans for Elementary School 16. And at the same time, I happened to be doing a presentation in Mrs. Nichols' STEM class. The kids had a project of how could they be better secure in their classroom? And one of the features was around the door handles. So, I know it'll be hard to see on camera, but this is the model we came up with. It's very sturdy. It shows the handle that's always in a locked position, and we went ahead and upgraded to a deadbolt lock as well. And the great feature about this is, obviously, it's compliant with fire code, and just one pass of the handle from the inside out unlocks both doors. So, I wanted to thank my new subcommittee, and then obviously, the kids who were part of that. We rolled right in around October time. We were required by the state to conduct a full-scale exercise. For anyone that's ever been involved in that, it's quite logistically strong. And again, my training subcommittee helped out in that regards. And I'll just show a few photos of that day. And there's a thank you also to the Powell Police Department, who brought one of their certified officers to fly the drone to help us in our training so we could see what we were doing. And in this plan right here is Liberty Middle School, and we practice our evacuation. And I don't know if it's hard to see on the screen or whatever, but you see administrators evacuating in that area. So, we did an evacuation, a reverse evacuation. And then we went on to what's called a family reunification. And that's an important piece to practice, because no matter what may happen, whether it's a natural disaster, a gas leak, if we ever have to leave a school building and reunite the students and staff with their family members at another school building, you can imagine the logistics involved in that. So, we practiced that. As you can see at the top of the screen, we pre-staged some buses. So, it involves transportation, communications, notifying parents, you know, of where to come and pick up their children, and do it in a manner that we have some sort of system in place. So, we utilized the team from Central Office, and they all had roles to play. We moved the, in this case, we didn't use students. We used administrators as students. We moved them successfully from one school building to another school building. And then we worked on the process of how do you go and release each individual child to their parents? So, that's going to be ongoing, but at least you know we have a plan in place. And again, in the fall, we strengthened our behavioral intervention teams. Some other names for that is like a threat assessment team. We, again, utilized the grant money, and we held training for all the elementary school, middle school, and high school administrators. We purchased new documentation software. And what we are looking at there is we're looking at behaviors of concern. It's not individuals. Again, we can't predict if something nefarious will happen, but we may be able to prevent it. And utilizing the behavioral intervention teams that we have at each school is a step in the right direction. That model, again, is approved by the United States Secret Service in the analysis of targeted school violence. That probably will become a mandate within the next year or two, irregardless of whether or not it's a mandate to have that. We know it's the right thing to do, so we're already working on that. And you may, this may look familiar to you. It's called the Standard Response Protocol. We instituted new school safety common language using this chart. I worked with Chris the Davis in the Communications Department to collaborate on school, parent, and community communication. These are posted in all the schools, in all the classrooms, and it's a nice flyer to put inside a substitute teacher's folder if they're not familiar with the school building. Again, this comes to us at no cost for printing, and the program is put on by an organization called the I Love You Guys Foundation. Moving forward, we had an unprecedented graduation commencement walk, which was a lot of work, but it truly was a lot of fun. It was short notice for us. If you could imagine the logistics behind trying to do four schools in four days, I want to give a special thank you to Jeff Gordon's department, Jeremy Mitchell, Cindy Mason, and Dan Ramy. These folks, in a moment's notice, had to build ramps to allow the students who weren't able to walk up the stage. We had to tear them down each night. We had to put them up at the school the next day. The most logistical hurdle was Friday night Berlin into first thing Saturday morning at Orange. All the parents that I know that come up, that came up to me couldn't be more complimentary. And again, it was no small feat. We had to borrow trailers from two different entities with traffic cones, and we utilized the Delaware County Sheriff's Department to help us in that endeavor. So, just a lot of behind-the-scenes work, and I figured we'd have a few reminiscent photos. Remember, I was supposed to do this presentation in June, so it would have been a little more timely than August, but this is more than a year wrap-up. So, that was Thursday night at Olentangie, followed by the weather delay at Berlin. But again, we were able to make, I love this shot right here. I love when she's throwing her tassel there. And then we, so that was Orange previously, and then we rolled into Liberty High School.
It was an incredible event, but Joe was incredibly nervous, because that whole thing is a security nightmare. And we were exposed. But behind the scenes, there were a lot of people monitoring things and...
You did well. I didn't even notice or think about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, thank you. I'll pass along.
That's part of the...
But we really utilized, we utilized our partnerships with not only police, but Liberty Township, Orange Township Highway Departments. They came and set up, like, road barricades for us, took them down, set them up at the next place. Again, I don't know if I should say this or not, but I think we did such a good job that it's probably going to be requested again. So, be careful what you wish for there, right? So, again, I wanted to give you an annual update, but since we're all the way into August, I wanted to tell you, you know, we didn't stop here, obviously, with all that's going on with COVID and all the operational planning this summer. We went right into our tabletop exercise just a couple of weeks ago. Again, with my, with the help of my training committee, we put together a three-year plan to do a tabletop exercise one year, a functional drill the next year, and then followed by a full-scale exercise. And we are going to try to do that at the beginning of every school year. And it's called Operation Resilient Olentangie. It's a pretty catchy phrase. But we want to start out the school years in that mindset. In this year's tabletop exercise, that was our scenario. So, we stated there was straight-line winds of 60 miles an hour. When we started planning for this in February, we had planned on doing four simultaneous schools at four of our conference rooms. So, obviously, we had to switch gears and go to virtual. So, we were able to do that still using Microsoft Teams. We had evaluators and facilitators from Hamilton County EMA, Union County EMA, I'm probably going to forget someone, obviously Delaware County EMA. And everyone was virtually, had a role in this. We did four schools in the AM, four in the PM for three straight days. So, I just wanted to think, you know, it was quite a feat to have this all going on. And so, what happens the very next day? For those of you that recall, so our training was Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. On Thursday night, and you don't have to read the whole thing, Delaware County issued an alert that we had funnel clouds in the area. So, again, these trainings aren't always about the worst-case scenario. You know, last year's full scale, we did do, you know, the scenario about an active shooter. But this one is more probable that we're going to have damage. The result or the outcome for us is the same response. So, we did a weather delay. It could be a gas leak. It could be with all the train tracks we have around in central Ohio, it could be a train derailment. It doesn't really matter the scenario. It's just, we just got to keep practicing. And that's what we did just up until a few weeks ago. And that does it for my formal presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions that anyone may have, and thank you for your time.
Any questions?
So, even though we're going to be starting back in an unusual situation, you're still going to plan on trying to do drills with the students and staff?
So, we are still mandated by law to conduct our safety drills and our fire drills. And just so you're aware, recently, the State of Ohio Fire Marshal just came out with a technical bulletin and said, "Schools that are in a hybrid model, because the kids aren't there but half the time, we have to conduct the same amount of drills for when those school kids are present." So, what effect that does is we have to double the amount of drills. But if you look at it, I mean, we're trying to reach the same population of kids. It's just that we're doing it around the same. So, yeah, we're still doing them. Any other questions? Okay, thank you all for your time.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Okay, moving into the Board President's report. I thought I would reread, no, I'm just kidding. I'm not. But I did put a lot of time into my last couple of presidents' reports. So, if you didn't see, listen to them. They still hold true. I'll be a little bit briefer this evening. I wanted to really open up with a debt of gratitude. First, to my own board. I am very proud of the fact that we have not had multiple emergency meetings, and that our superintendent and his leadership team have presented us with an option that is, that other districts are moving towards. So, thank you, everyone. I also would like to thank our staff, because they work here every day. Their jobs are changing, and they don't know exactly what they're going to look like. They'll start to really learn what that looks like starting on Monday, when they come back into the buildings. I am very impressed. I have been staying off of social media, because I feel that the negative, I don't, I don't have enough strength to, you know, overcome the negativity that's there. But I have not, I have received, all of us have received, a series of emails, and they have not been from our staff. Our staff has been very patient. They're waiting, they're taking direction. They are resilient, and they're going to figure it out, and they're going to do what's best for their students. So, I am so grateful that we have the partnerships that we have with our association, that it, our back-to-school plan came together as a group. And I'm just very, I'm proud of that. We had a four-hour board meeting the last time we were together. And we hadn't had a board meeting that long since I've been on the board. But I will say, after I got home, I felt energized. And I felt energized, because in this room, we did not have a camera, but in this room were our, was our leadership team, and our directors, and supervisors. And they energized me, because every day, they come in here with a list of problems this big, and every day, they work towards the solution. And I, it was comforting to be amongst them. They're professionals, they're good at what they do, and there's not a person that was in this room that doesn't put our students and our staff first. So, I wanted to thank them as well. I wanted to assure the public that it's come up in some emails that we want to be back in school five days. I thought we were pretty clear, but our last several meetings have been a little bit lengthy, so maybe people did not stay tuned in. But that's what we want. But we get one chance to start the school year. One, if we don't do it right, what will happen? We will be shut down. And then that is, that extrapolates the problem for working parents, that keeps our students from learning, and we have to recalibrate. I know we have, I think that our plan is fluid, and it can react to what we, you know, the pandemic. But again, we get one chance, and I am very, I feel comfortable, I think most of the board feels comfortable that we are going to, again, be a trailblazer and show we can do this, we can do it as safely as possible, and get our students back with us all the time. So, I wanted to be very clear about that. I also want to plead with the community. Again, this part of my president's report, I will repeat. Our community has clearly expressed that they want our students to be empathetic. And as parents, we are going to be with our, we have been with our children a lot more. So, I'm going to remind you all that your role models in your reaction to this pandemic and how school looks this year, you're modeling for your kids. And I watched a really great YouTube video from the, it's going to escape me, the name of the, how, it's that family that makes all the YouTube videos.
The Holderness.
Holderness, yes. And they did a skit about returning to school. And basically, it ended with, whatever your district has to do, you need to cheerlead it. You need to sell it to your kids, you need to figure out a way. I know that there are some people that have had to make incredible sacrifices, and there's working parents, and they're trying to figure it out. But I keep reminding myself that I'm, my children are taking my cue. So, I'm trying to remain positive. I'm sending my daughter off to college tomorrow. Paying a lot of money in tuition, including additional distance learning fees, which I'm not understanding. But, you know, I have been very clear with my kids to change their expectations for the school year. I think as a community, we need to change our expectations. It's not going to look like it did last year. And that's part of preparing them for going back to school this year. So, I'm not going to ramble on any longer. But I did want, Dave and I were able to attend our Facilities Committee meeting last week, and there have been several questions in the community about what we are doing with our facilities and air filtration. Do you feel comfortable talking about that, Dave?
Sure, thanks, Mindy. It was an excellent meeting, and Jeff did a really nice job. He included Frank Eisenhower, one of the members. He's a mechanical engineer by trade. They spent a lot of time investigating the buildings and what's being done. They also had conversation with Mark Scott. He's the Facilities Director of Ohio State University. Extremely important position as he deals with, obviously, facilities. So, I thought I would, I made some notes, just some of the things that they're doing, and then I'm actually going to read a couple of comments from Jeff's email. They looked at everything in our buildings. They were looking at hot water heaters, coils, flushing lines, removing the water to electric water coolers, removing items that are extraneous to the classroom, like coffee pots, any of those kinds of things that can have a negative influence. And one part of this that was really, it was really incredible was the whole thing about the HVAC system, where they went to a lot of refinements. So, I'll just paraphrase from this. "The district will be exchanging as much outside air as possible." That was a very important part of the discussion, the importance of outside air, while maintaining the humidity in the buildings. "As recommended, our school buildings will continue to utilize MERV 13 as a final filter the air will pass through before being dispersed into the classroom." That was, I thought, was really a critical item. And he's provided a link of information. So, it was well done. They've done a great job of investigating the systems and how the building can be as safe as possible.
That MERV filter is like the top of the line, best filter. It does, in the link, I don't know if that's available on our microsite. It is great. You know, parents that are concerned, we're all concerned about that. I encourage you to visit that. And it's the best that they have. And I believe we were already using that prior to.
A big difference on what we're going to do is bringing in the outside air because running our systems, as trying to optimize efficiency and energy savings, you don't necessarily do that. So as with everything with this pandemic, it's, there's always a cost with it. But that cost is worth it. So, does it have to be?
He's already thinking about how still is it 264?
Well, if I may, just on the social side of things, I was really pleased to see you're going to be presenting to go to the clear panels at tables and desks. I just think that's a huge improvement over just those cardboard panels that feel like you're in a box. So I was really happy to see that you're doing that change. Understanding there's a cost.
There is a cost, yes. Any other board members have anything to add this evening? All right, well, thank you. Mr. Rafe, your superintendent's report, please.
Good evening, good evening. Good evening, everyone out there in the virtual world. Thank you for joining us. And Mindy, thank you for those very, very, very kind words about the staff. I keep reiterating that and the partnerships we have. And it really means a lot. And the support of the board really means a lot. Not having multiple special meetings is, means a lot. I did hear from an area superintendent that six hours was the longest meeting I'd heard of in the area. But the special meetings all went back-to-back, four, five, six hours, so.
Going to say, when we hired a superintendent, we didn't think he would have to make bigger decisions than our governor. And he has. As I watched the press conference today, they can't even officially take a position on children in masks yet. So, thank you.
Well, we're going to keep trying to do what we think is best. And I do want to start off with some good things. As of August 1st, we started fall sports practice fully underway, both with, the state is now calling contact and non-contact sports. There's some different provisions. You know, golf teams are playing matches. Tennis teams are playing matches as non-contact sports across country. Just be, they changed to a non-contact sport. But fall athletics are underway. So when I hear people or people send me an email saying, we want sports, we have sports. We're playing sports. And we're going to continue to play sports until someone gives us an order not to play sports. We realize how important all the extra sports are, all the extracurricular sports, band, the music programs. You know, we're working on, you know, what's going to happen in our theater programs once we get back and how we're going to try to, try to continue to do all those things. So I did get a chance to visit Orange Football Practice and see some student athletes out there. Here's a picture of Liberty's football practice, you know, again, is underway. We're waiting for the guidelines from the governor that are supposed to be released Tuesday about competitions, whether or not we can have a scrimmage before the season starts. OHSA has released guidelines regarding football. They haven't released any guidelines regarding other contact sports like soccer. But, you know, again, we're waiting for all of those to come. We will follow the recommended guidelines and do our best to continue to try to have sports. A big thing the governor kind of hinted at, that he's going to, you know, that is going to, they're going to continue to stress is that there's a lot of things we can control when we have the kids in our environment. But what the students and the adults do when they're not in our environment, and you see some of the examples that are happening in the major, like with a major league team, you know, people leave the, violate the rules and what happens when those, when those things happen? You know, our students and staff are going to have to be extra diligent when they're not with us, if we want to continue to play. Because, you know, as we've gotten back, we have had some positive cases pop up. And we're working with the health district and following their guidelines. But about whether or not we, you know, contact tracing and whether or not we have to shut down a team or those kind of things. So we'll get more and more into that as we go. But as of today, we have sports. And we have, bands are practicing as well. This picture of Orange's band practicing. And you can see them social distancing and they're wearing their mask. And then they don't, obviously don't wear their mask when they're playing their instruments. But again, those are all, and I know it's difficult for people to understand how we can do these things when we can't go to school full-time. But there are guidelines regarding this that we're able to achieve. Some of the things with regards to social distancing, we cannot achieve fully. So, you know, I'll talk a little more about that later on. So there's a picture of Liberty's cheerleaders cheering with their masks on. So I want to just touch on, we don't have any formal presentation on our Back Together 2020, but I just want to give an update on a, on a couple of things. You know, it's, we've worked, I think we've worked really, really hard on this. I want to reiterate the underlying notion that from the beginning, it's been our goal to get our students and staff back in the buildings. That's what we want, obviously, as safely as possible. You know, the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatricians all agree. They strongly advocate that all policy considerations for this coming school year should start with the goal of having students physically, physically present in school. Now, that doesn't say physically present all the time, but it says physically present in school. In our model, that we are going to start the school year on, we'll have students physically present in school. You know, and as I look at, read from the American Academy of Pediatric Physicians Report, it directly says, there's a conflict between optimal academic and social emotional learning in schools and strict adherence to current physical distancing guidelines. The CDC recommends, again, recommends that schools space seating desks at least six feet apart when feasible. When feasible. In many school settings, six feet between students is not feasible without limiting the number of students. So evidence suggests that spacing as close as three feet may approach the benefits of six feet of space. So my point in reading some of those statements is that there's nothing clear about any of this. There's nothing definite or absolute. So when we talked on July 13th about coming back fully, using these as guidelines, there's, that made a lot of people uncomfortable. And the more I reflected about it, conversations with some of you, conversations with a lot of people in the community, conversations with our staff, the more I reflected about it, it did make me more uncomfortable. And a lot of that had to do with the statement in the, that the same report where there's a likely greater impact of physical distancing on risk reduction of COVID in secondary schools than early education elementary schools. So it means you need to achieve more physical distancing with the older kids than possibly the younger kids. And when we start thinking about 1,800 to 1,900 students, after we've lost our, taken out our committed distance learning students at Orange and Liberty High School, that, so people ask me, what changed so much between July 13th and July 28th? That's what changed. That's what changed. And then, you know, we've been really struggling with this, you know, to, or, again, there's just no absolutes in any of this. To quote the CDC report, the guiding principles to keep in mind, lowest risk, students and teachers engage in virtual-only activities and classes. Moderate risk, small in-person classes, activities, and events. Highest risk, full-sized in-person classes, activities, and events, students are not spaced apart. So there's, as we talk through all those things, and this is one of those benefits of having an insurance guy on your board, who understand risk. But when we work through a lot of these things, we have to come up with a plan that does something to mitigate some risk. And, you know, I do, I talk to a lot of people and read a lot of emails and get a lot of feedback. I just wish I had the sense of clarity that some of the people who talk to me have, that absolutely know, one way or the other, what's going to happen if we open fully five days a week with everybody and not optimal social distancing. I wish, at the same end of the spectrum, about what's going to happen if we are in a remote environment or the hybrid environment. The reality is, we don't know. None of us know. The numbers in the county are good. I agree. When people quote me the numbers in the county, I agree they're good. But they're good because we've been apart. We don't know what's going to happen when we come back together. And I think it's prudent to go slow, to go fast. That's what we did with all the athletic decisions we made, starting in June, as we moved into July and the phases, working with our staff on how to properly do all these things. So we are going to start on this hybrid attendance model. Got a question. We actually thought the county was going to go to yellow on the governor's color-coded system today. And we didn't. But honestly, I keep saying this, the color-coded system is one data point. And there are times I regret even referencing it in our model. We're not directly tied to that. It's one piece of information that will inform us because it all depends on what are the indicators that may be moving it one way or the other. So we are going to start on the hybrid regardless. We just don't have the time to get ready to have everybody here because of all the things we have to do, all the work we've been doing to plan to open on this hybrid model. I think it's prudent to do this regardless of what our level is because we want to be able to properly teach and train our students about how to behave in our school environments. And it is infinitely, we have a, we greatly increase the chance of being successful long-term if we do that with fewer students for a period of time. And I'm not going to say a date. Some other districts have set a date of a week or two weeks or a month. I think all that does is limit you in your decision-making because you're forced to that date. And things continue to change. So we have on there, we anticipate at least a few weeks on hybrid attendance to start the school year. As you know, we're going to start the first day with just kindergartners, sixth graders, and ninth graders to transition them. And then we're going to transition the other kids for the next four days. And then we'll be in our routine the second week. And I think it's going to be prudent that we continue to monitor, to collect new information. We are collecting information now. We have students in all their extracurricular activities. We have staff returning to the building on Monday. So we are going to be getting some information about what's happening and we will have cases. There is no doubt, we are going to have cases. We already have. We're going to monitor and see, and, you know, do what the health district, the health district tells us to do with regards to who needs to be isolated. Just because somebody's positive doesn't mean an entire sports team will need to be isolated or an entire classroom. It'll all depend on the contact tracing that goes into that. So our staff is returning on the 17th. We're excited to have them back and welcome them. We're excited to welcome all of our new staff members. You know, again, there are more questions, there's still, there are still a lot of questions to be answered. And we're working very hard to get through all of those as we're ready to welcome students back on the 31st. We've got a lot of work going on with professional development for our teachers. You see there from August 17th to August 28th, the list of all the different things that are happening. It will be, you know, 12 hours of required individual district-wide professional development, 18 hours of building specific collaboration and planning, and 30 hours of personal and team collaboration planning are all built into that. Our technology team has done an incredible job of developing a series of modules for this school year. And a lot of the work, when we talk about what's going to happen on the virtual days of our hybrid or potentially remote learning, if we have to get to that point, and the consistency that's going to be present throughout all of our programming with regard to schoology. A lot of work's gone into that. These are some examples of some of the professional development. There's a mandatory one-hour bullying, harassment, and intimidation reporting. And you see there a description, I won't read the whole descriptions. Trauma-informed care. You know, that, that's a really important topic because every one of our kids has experienced some force, form of trauma and how we address those things. Anti-racism and sense of belonging is part of that. There's a couple hours of schoology models. You see some of these effective blended learning. You know, again, these are all now required professional developments that our staff will be doing here to start the school year while we don't have students in schools. As Mr. King mentioned, we have changed courses based on feedback we received from the community regarding PPE, one of our PPE items, the table dividers. You know, I saw Mr. Meyer's presentation, quite honestly, last, that time, I went, really? Opaque, we gotta have, but being typical ONG administrator, the opaque dividers were about a third of the cost of the clear ones. So that's, we went that route. But I agree, these are better. I agree, they do cost more. So they are on your agenda for approval. $143,401, so I'll touch on that later in a minute. I do want to ask Todd Meyer to come up to the podium and talk about our committed distance learning staffing process. And then Dr. Fede, he'll talk about the committed distance learning program. But these guys did an incredible job in collaboration with a lot of different departments and teams to get this staffed. I can't remember exactly, where do we at? How many students?
Over 5,000.
That includes the waitlist?
5,200. 5,200. So thank you, Mr. Rafe. And I also want to just go back to your, Mrs. Patrick, your remarks at the beginning. And thank you for that because you're absolutely right. We've been faced with problem after problem after problem. But the one thing about this district, and I want to thank a lot of groups, when we're presented with a problem, a lot of people roll up their sleeves and say, okay, this is a problem, how can we solve it? And with this staffing, basically, an entire district in basically two weeks was a huge, huge undertaking from the district. But in collaboration with everybody involved, from my office, my support staff, assistant directors, the curriculum team, the building principals have been phenomenal. And the teaching staff with Elaine Eddy's leadership have been amazing through this process. So with, without all of that collaboration and partnership and really the will to solve a problem and get this done, I'm not sure I'd be ready to report. But with that, so way back when, when we started talking about the different models in committed distance learning, back in probably, I don't know, June, maybe, in June sometime, but it seems like three years ago, but it was in June, we started discussing the different models. So when we discussed the committed distance learning model, we started thinking about, okay, how are we going to staff that? And then we anticipated, I think, 2,000 to 3,000 students opting in to the distance, our committed distance learning model. And we ended up having now 5,200. So obviously, that presents a lot of challenges when you have that many students opting in. So we, we talked about surveying our staff early on. So we created a survey beginning of July. And again, in collaboration with the OTA Association, we sent that out probably, I want to say around July 13th. So we gave teachers a little over a week and a half to fill that out, to show interest in the committed distance learning model. So that was kind of good that we did that. And then we cut that July 21st date off and then still extended the student interest survey there till August 2nd. Because what it, what it allowed my office to do was take, okay, all of the teacher who showed interest, we were able to then put all of those teachers in their level. So elementary, middle school, high school, and then licensure. With the middle school licensure, the elective licensure, special ed, ELL. So we had all that ready to go on August 3rd, really, because I think Jack emailed me at 1:10 a.m. on August 3rd, after that closed at midnight on August 2nd with the first round of numbers. And obviously, they were a lot more than we were expecting. But we laid the groundwork for the process of staffing. So once we got the student data, we were able to break the student data down into levels. So how many students in elementary school, how many students in the elementary schools at each grade level, kindergarten through five, same thing with middle school and then high school. High school's a little more complex because of all of the different courses high school students take. So we had, and then the special areas as well. So we had all of the teachers, and then obviously, put the kids in those buckets, and then started staffing. And we started with elementary first. So we staffed, we determined the number of students at kindergarten through five, and then how many sections, how many teachers, we would need to pull in to commit a distance learning. Now, the good thing is, at the elementary level, at least in core, every core teacher who applied got into committed distance learning. Now, our challenge was, we didn't have enough teachers. So, what we did was, I talked to Elaine, and again, we worked out some contractual language, because we have some contractual language that, I think it's Article 19 stipulates the timeline when we have to notify teachers of their teaching assignment for the next year, and it's a July 15th deadline. So we worked through that with the association, because we knew we were going to have to move a lot of people. So what we did was, we decided to go a voluntary process, and then if we had to go to involuntary, we would go to the involuntary process. So we went back out, and at this point, we knew exactly how many buildings, elementaries, because elementaries had now too many teachers, because more kids came out at grade levels. So we went back to those individual buildings and grade levels to get volunteers to opt into the committed distance learning. So, that went really well. And our principals did a really good job, and our teachers really stepped up. And so we were able to fill the remaining vacancies through, for the most part, voluntary. We did have some involuntary placements after the fact, and not many into the CDL. But where the involuntary came into play was, after we staffed the committed distance learning, it left pockets of vacancies back in our buildings. So, and we still had some overages. And so, we had to transfer teachers from, like, Orange High School to Olentangy High School, from Scioto Ridge to Arrowhead, so other buildings. So, we worked through that, through the involuntary process, and then created a plan to do that.
Were there any skews either way, one grade, one building, where you had over-indexing a CDL?
As far as teachers?
Or even the students?
Students, yeah. Meadows, Olentangy Meadows was...
400.
Yeah. What was the other one?
400 out of Meadows?
725.
Heritage Elementary. Orange High School is probably our largest high school. The middle schools were all pretty much balanced, between the middle schools. About 200, some students. So, yeah, so then that came into play, like in Meadows.
Crazy challenge.
We really had to go to Meadows, because we had more students, obviously, and not enough teachers. So, we went back to, that would be an example, went back to Meadows and asked for teachers to...
The enrollment reports are in our folder. So you can see, like...
I just pulled the May 6, 2021.
It's, I printed them off, so I got them.
You have both. So we're still doing our projected enrollment, but then we did the enrollment with CDL students removed.
It's, might be in the projected enrollment folder?
Have you seen a touch range recently?
So, that's walking through the process. And so at the end of the day, so we have placed 200 teachers in the CDL program. And we still have a couple more we have to place, but we're probably, I would say, 98.5, 99% done. And what we're working through now is, because we've added more students the last week or so, so we're making sure that we're staffing. We're still working through special ed staffing. We're almost complete with that, but we just, we have some more.
A student has selected the CDL program, and maybe they're at Freedom Trail, but their teacher might be at Heritage.
Yep, good question. So one thing, early on, we did, when we pulled a teacher out of the, or a school, we tried to match them with students from that school. Now, it's not absolute, so we will have some students from schools that will have other teachers. But, we really did the best that we could matching that up. So if you had two teachers, and there were like 69 students at that grade level, we could only put 30 in each of those with the two teachers. So, some of those students may be with another teacher. So there were actually curriculum departments working through that now, because now that we've staffed it with staffing, they're assigning students to individual sections and classes.
And we're trying to assign them as cohorts of kids. So if they aren't exactly assigned, we're trying to make sure we assign enough kids that they're not, like, two kids from one school are off on the other one. So that, because they will work collectively as a group sometimes.
Right. And we'll see what happens, but the intent is, next year, we may be back to normal. So kids are going back to their schools, and they want to stay with them. And we're going to try our best to put all teachers back in their current assignment as well.
And then, just to touch on what we've had to hire backfill-wise, we've had to do some additional hiring.
Yeah, so additional hiring.
Inside, outside the forecast?
What's that? Inside?
Like, we're still within the forecast?
Oh yeah, we're still within the forecast, but we have had to hire, I'll call them, in their certified teachers, so long-term certified teachers, 20 long-term certified teachers to fill in across the district or CDL. We have a few of those spots. Kindergarten was one. We had to hire some long-term certified teachers for kindergarten and a couple other areas. So, right now, we're at 20. And we thought, obviously, moving forward with that, we're going to bring certified teachers in. But it's hard to make a commitment when teachers are going back into the building to next year, or some at the semester, maybe. So, those are pretty much all filled. Right now, our challenge is world language, because not a lot of world language teachers out there in August, it is 13th. So we're working through that with a couple of our buildings.
I have a question about world language. They have to be certified, correct?
Yes.
So if we were in classroom, we would have staffed up for the growth, and the 20 would be on top of the growth. Is that fair?
No, because we didn't use all of our growth positions. So, we were about 10 to 12 growth positions because of enrollment we did not use this year.
So we could have used those ones we had in the forecast and hired those people, but we're not certain we're going to need them next year.
Next year, right.
Because we, especially with kindergarten, in order to make our kindergarten schedule work, we had to create additional sections of kindergarten to have enough social distancing.
Right.
So, instead of, those would be teachers we would have hired that we would not have needed next year. So hiring long-term certified substitute teachers, we won't pay them benefits, and then we'll, it'll have much lower costs than we would have certified. So our sub-costs are going to be up, but...
Right. I think Emily reported that last time.
Yes. Our purchase service is going up.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So Dr. Fede is going to just kind of touch on some of the academic pieces of committed distance learning.
Mr. Meyer did a great job of kind of laying it out for you, how we got the students and teachers into CDL. What we're working through now is, like he said, placing the students in courses, determining the number of different sections of courses at the secondary level, and then preparing for the teachers to start on Monday with their professional development. These teachers will not be reporting to their school buildings. They'll be reporting to CDL virtually. And they're going to go through all of the professional development that Mr. Rafe shared, in addition to other professional development, to prepare them uniquely for the CDL environment. Mrs. Patrick, you asked about world language. So yes, we are able, we were able to match teacher licensure with world language. That was one way. We changed from the beginning of CDL, only a few weeks ago, but seemingly a long time ago till now, is we were able to add in the world language with Olentangy teachers staffing it. We've also been able to add AP Calculus BC, which has been one that we've heard as well, and a few other courses that, by using our own teachers, we're able to go beyond the apex curriculum that we were intending to use originally. So, when we started conceptualizing CDL, we thought we would have an imperfect match of teacher licensure, available teachers, and the students who want to do CDL. When you use a computer program, you still have to have a teacher for the course. You don't get away without having a teacher. But that teacher has to be licensed, but not necessarily licensed in the content area of the course. Because we reached a critical mass of 5,200 students and 200 teachers, we've been able to, with Mr. Meyer and Mrs. Fries's work, match all, virtually all of our courses with teachers who are licensed in those courses. We no longer need the computer-based programs. I do believe there's a misconception that that means that there will be nothing formalized, or nothing that, there will be no more interaction, or students won't know what they're doing on a given day. And that's not true. Once our teachers start next week and work through the process, they'll be communicating with the CDL families, specifically what to expect in their classroom at their grade level. And I, we are preparing for students to be able to transition back to the schools at the semester. But I have every expectation that, just like when we redistrict kids, they never want to leave the school they have to leave, but once they get to the school they're going, they never ask to go back. I don't think a lot of students are going to want to leave CDL mid-year, because they're going to be having a great experience with a Olentangy teacher who knows who they are, who is tailoring instruction to meet their unique needs, who is communicating regularly with their parents. And I think it's going to be a great experience for most students. The one area where we are still unable to match licensures is in the middle school electives. So, many of our middle schools have only one teacher in the Unified Arts. So if a middle school has an art teacher, and that art teacher moves to CDL, then the middle school doesn't have an art teacher. One of the things Mr. Meyer and I tried to do throughout this process was to honor CDL as a viable option without prioritizing one model over the other. So we didn't want the buildings to feel like they were riding backseat to CDL or vice versa. They're all viable options. So, we didn't feel it was appropriate to take the Unified Arts, all of the Unified Arts teachers from the middle schools. So we will, most likely still at this point, be using some computer-based programs for middle school Unified Arts. But other than that, we have a perfect match of teachers. Also, the question about students and teachers from the same school matching, we are prioritizing that where possible. More often than not, that won't be the case. Or, more often than not, it'll be the case that a teacher has some teachers from their building, excuse me, some students from their building, but not only students from their building. We're also prioritizing not matching more than two, or maybe necessarily three, schools with one teacher, if we can avoid that. Because when the CDL teacher needs to collaborate for any given reason with the homeschool teacher of a student, we don't want them to have to contact seven or eight different schools in order to get through their roster. We're in that process right now, though, so none of those are promises, because we have to see how the numbers shake out, unfortunately. You know, when we're doing staffing and course placement, students are not, they don't come out of buildings in nice little packets of 5 or 25. And the teachers who join CDL didn't come out that way either, so we're working through that right now.
High school electives would probably be your most, your largest, biggest challenge in that particular area.
Right, yes. And there are still a number of high school electives that we are still unable to offer in the Unified Arts. I think I referenced jewelry making in the last meeting. Some of the courses just do not lend themselves to the digital environment. But there are enough courses for a student to take a robust schedule to earn a minimum of five credits at secondary is necessary for athletic eligibility. So all students will have that opportunity as a minimum, but they will be able to exceed that as well. Are there any questions?
You want to, while you're there and talking, since you do supervise people services, maybe touch on some aspects of special education? Because we had some comments that, you know, we didn't talk about students with disabilities in our last presentation, which obviously they are certainly included.
So, you know, it's tough to talk about students with disabilities in this environment, because we're building it as we go. And we, when you're talking about students with disabilities, you're talking about an individualized education plan, which looks different for every kid. It's really hard to make blanket statements. But a couple blanket statements that I can make is, every student will be assigned an intervention specialist. Every student will receive the interventions that they're supposed to receive according to their IEP. That's true also of students on 504s. That's true also of English-language learners. We are working with Holly Roberts on OG delivery in the virtual model. We're working with our related service providers, who are occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech-language pathologists, on their services in the virtual model. We don't have all the answers yet. And I understand some parents are frustrated with that, but their teachers will be returning on Monday. Every day, we make progress. There's a lot going on every day. But we are, I have every confidence that we'll be fully ready for the first day of school, that it would be unacceptable for school to start, and a student with disabilities or not, to not understand what their education services are going to look like. So we will have that when it's necessary, as quickly as possible.
Can I ask a question about intervention specialists? So, we have intervention specialists that will be in buildings, but they will not have any CDL students on their caseload, or will they be doing double duty?
I don't know that I can answer that with 100% certainty in any way. I think it's definitely possible that there will be intervention specialists, and likely that there will be intervention specialists in buildings who are only serving students in buildings. As we're working through it with the intervention specialists, we're working with the teachers in determining how they can best serve all of their students. And within a staff in any given building, there are intervention specialists with different specialties and with different abilities. So, we're working through that. There might be an instance where an intervention specialist wants to serve a CDL student, or needs to serve a CDL student. But, I can't speak to that perfectly just yet, because our people services department is working through it.
Seven.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I think that's...
Julie had a question.
Other questions?
Yep. We've touched on the CDL learning environment, but I've also heard parents say that through this hybrid program, that their children, their children are only going to get half of the learning, because they're only in school half of the time. And therefore, they want half of their taxes back, but that's another story. But can you explain how a student is going to be learning full-time on a hybrid program?
So the at-home learning days in the hybrid model will be asynchronous. The teacher will not be live on the other end of the computer, because they will be in the classroom with other students. However, the teacher will be directing the learning that the students are doing at home. Students will be preparing for the next day of in-person learning, practicing what they learned on the previous day of in-person learning. We have many computer programs that are useful in this setting with practicing math and reading. And teachers will be able to monitor student progress after the fact. They won't be there watching them do it, but they'll be able to see how many, how long did it take a student to solve that problem? How many attempts did they make? And that will inform how they are approaching their instruction with that student when they return to the school environment. Part of our professional development at the beginning of the school year will be around the blended learning philosophy. It's an educational model that has merit, and that many of our teachers have implemented previously and successfully. Some will be perfecting what they started in the fourth quarter. We've had over 1,000 teachers take courses this summer along these lines. So, it will look different than the fourth quarter for some families. Some families had great experiences in the fourth quarter, many families had great experiences in the fourth quarter. And even in those cases, the teachers, I know for a fact, have been attending these classes and are always looking at how they can get better in their practice. So, the biggest challenge for the at-home learning will be starting. And that is something that we, we do need student initiative, we need parent help to a degree. We need parent help to a degree. The students have to open the computer and log on. The teacher will have told them at school the day before what they should be expecting. All of the students, all of the parents, will be finding their instructions and their materials in Schoology so they won't have to hunt for it. But there will need to be effort in school, or excuse me, at home as well as in school. But if the effort is there on the part of the student, learning will happen.
Yeah, and there's certainly an expectation that we're going to teach standards. So time will be utilized differently. But as I look at some of our class sizes now in the hybrid, you know, that we've taken the committed distance learning students out of the class sizes and then you only have, you know, half as many students on any given day, you've got a really manageable number that I think you can really, really run with. As opposed to all the management things you do when you're trying to manage 28 bodies or 25 kids in a class and those kind of things. And now you have, you know, 14 or 15 or 10 or something like that. I think you can be a lot more efficient and even obviously more effective. I don't want to walk myself into this argument with, you know, or discussion with Elaine Eddy, who's probably watching this thing too, that she'll text me, I'll get a text before the presentation. I always told you small class sizes mattered. So, you know, we have to be careful about that. But I do think that, you know, can be a lot of, you know, a lot of things that are going to be different and more effective than what we did in the spring. You know, as we know, we weren't, nobody was ready for this. The expectations that we're going to be able to set with our students, having them in school half that, you know, having them in school, the days they're in school, that touch point when, before they weren't able to do those kind of things, you know, it is not what we did last spring. So that's why, so I just can't imagine how we would have started the year remotely not knowing the kids, which we said all along, go back to the first thing we started this presentation with. Having kids in person in school was what we started with. So, any other questions?
Oh, yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
So do we know how many students have officially withdrawn to attend either a private school or to be homeschooled? And just as a reminder, if the parent is doing that, they have to let us know. And if you're homeschooling, you have to make sure you fill out the proper paperwork at the state because you just can't say, "I'm homeschooling." But do we know those numbers?
Dr. Fettin and I discussed that because we've been keeping an eye on that. 52 for homeschool at this point, which is about double what we've had in the past. And we don't, they have to sign up every year, so we don't always know who's new and who's not. But it takes some effort to get to that. And I think the number was 28 transferred to private. So, and that's maybe a little bit more, but not, you know, we still have kids, you know, enrolling. And we're still finding out, this is a lot of the time now where we find out kids have unenrolled.
Yeah. And then I always come with a list of questions. You've answered a lot of them, so thank you. But this is not on the learning side, but how is our bus ridership looking? You know, for the people who had to sign up for...
We have, out of our 22,500 students, we have about 19,800 eligible for transportation. We have routed 11,400. So we had about 3,000 opt-out, tell us they're not going to ride. So, you know, we have routed that many students. You know, obviously, the routes are initially this right now. We've changed a lot of the routes, half as many kids on the routes. We just never know exactly how many are going to ride.
Well, if you say 3,000 kids have opted out of busing, just a warning to parents, you can't leave for school then five minutes before you want to drop your kid off.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be interesting.
Extended drop-off.
Yeah.
Have you coordinated transportation with the ACC?
Yes. Oh, yeah. I'll let you know when that route is.
It's me, too.
Yeah, you too, Sarah, that's right. Others?
No, you got all of my others.
So there's just, you know, there's two action items just mentioned. I'll be with the final step of the process to approve Mr. Jamato and then the purchase price for the clear dividers. You know, I just want to close with, I had somebody send me an email and it was, they're adamant, "We have to open five days a week, every day, and, you know, the kids need it, and they need their sports and they need all these things." And I totally agree with that, totally agree with that. And that's what we want and what we're working towards. And they closed it with, "It's up to me to lift the morale of these kids." "It's up to me to lift the morale of these kids and stand up for them and fight for them." And I responded, in my response was, "It's up to all of us to lift the morale of this, of our kids and support this plan. This is the plan. Support this plan, support your kids." I appreciate all the feedback and all the emails and all the, and people that have demonstrated and all those things and let their opinions be known. This is the plan. The way we can lift the morale of the kids is to get behind the plan, be supportive, show kindness and grace, and be respectful of each other. Come together as a community and support this plan. And then the last thing, somebody should have shared this quote with me in a parent, a meeting I have with a parent. It's just that, "If you want to meet your ego, if you want to meet your ego..." Oh, jeez, I just blew it. I had it, I read it like three times. "If you want to meet your ego, observe how quickly you have an opinion and how urgently you need to be right." There's no right in any of this. Nothing is going to be perfect. Let's just come together and move it forward. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you. And I'm going to piggyback on your sentiments about community because there's some people that are in predicaments right now on how they're going to navigate this. And I think that that's where community can help each other out. I remember the story you would tell Julie about when school was shut down and your mom taught in the class.
Yep.
I think that can be, you know, arranged with transportation. And I also will say this, my daughter did hybrid English her senior year and loved that format. And seniors, this is your, here's your test, how you're going to do in college because this is how college is. So we're going to, we're going to get our kids really ready for college after this year's schedule. Again, thank you, Mr. Rafe, and to all of the members of Olentangie Administration for your leadership. Speaking of leadership, let's talk about money, Mrs.
Comment, please, please.
Oh, absolutely.
I just wanted to return to the fact that you had talked to superintendents about the length of the meetings. We've all seen the news about districts having special meetings. Even your president's, your superintendent's report this evening was longer than usual. Yes, we had a four-hour meeting at our last board meeting. But it was not a meeting because of negative discussion environment. It was a long meeting because your team presented very in-depth, comprehensive, coordinated, collaborative reports on how we're going to go into this system. And of course, it was a long meeting, but it was a positive long meeting. So I just wanted to make sure there's that distinction of why we had a long meeting.
The only one.
The only one.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Mr. O'Brien.
My other comment is, remember graduation? People were in uproar that we weren't having in-person graduation. And we get more positive feedback about the drive-up graduation than any event I know of in the last 12 years.
Well, I'm afraid a lot of people will want to continue distance learning and then we'll have to hire additional staff.
Well, it is going to, I mean, that's going to be interesting. I mean, we've been having that discussion about whether or not we will have our own virtual academy for, you know, eternity. You know, we talked about in 2013 with Dr. Lucas-led Project 2020, actually, Mrs. Davis was highly involved in it, about these kind of scenarios. At the time, people were really, really resistant to this notion. You know, an unintended consequence, you know, we're going to have to discuss here soon after we get school opened, is that the next elementary and middle school may be able to be moved off. I don't know. Again, because if we get a big commit, you know, a big push for committed distance learning, you know, there's a lot of things that, planning takes time. You know, whether we may or may not be able to do it. But it should be open for discussion because obviously there's money tied to it. So, you know, again, every time I think something might get easy.
I hear survey, future survey. Anything else? Okay. Mrs. Hefield, your treasurer's report, please.
Thank you. You know, and I would like to echo that sentiment in that the collaboration, the hard work that everybody's putting in, it's phenomenal. There's still a lot of questions to be answered, but we're working together to have conversations and walk through those. And I'm very grateful for what they're doing for not only everybody's kids in the community, but their our kids too, right? We all have children that are coming into this environment and being a part of this. So it's personal and professional, so thank you. With that, I'll give us a quick update from the treasurer's office, if you don't mind. I'll start with some of our funding updates. The last time we spoke, we had some CARES Act funding that we discussed. And I have some more information that kind of helps segregate the different pockets of CARES Act funding that are becoming available. The one large pocket that we discussed is now labeled the Coronavirus Relief Fund, so CRF. That's the million dollars that we had discussed at our last board meeting. It has been issued. We've been awarded $1,023,094. The process for using those funds is that it will go through the federal procurement system that the Ohio Department of Education has established. We will spend the dollars, do funding reports, we'll run the account in the red, do funding reports, and then do a cash drawdown to replenish those funds. So that will occur every month, as it does with our other federal grants, Title I, Special Education, and the like. Those funds should be ready to go. We still have to put in some budgetary information and get some of the paperwork uploaded, but it should be ready to go within the coming weeks. So we'll start to see those general fund allocations being offset on the August financials. So while we're still tracking our PPEs and all of those expenditures, we'll actually see some of this come forth in the reporting that we bring for approval in the next month or so. At our next board meeting on the 27th, we will bring forward the July financials and we'll let you know within there how much PPE is a part of that and what we're looking at with those costs. So that's one additional bucket of money. There's also additional federal CARES Act funding categorized as Broadband Ohio Connectivity Grant. This is a grant that has set aside dollars for school districts that can be used or spent on hotspots and internet-enabled devices to students. Each district is allowed to apply for one grant. You have to apply. These are not funds that are automatically allocated. Each school could reach a maximum of $250,000, depending on what they submit for the grant proposal. And the total buck... Each district, excuse me.
Oh, okay.
My district, no, 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 I'm sorry. Each school district, excuse me. And the maximum amount of dollars that is eligible is 50 million in total for the state. So depending on how, how many districts apply, what they've put on their list, we may or may not reach that $250,000 allocation. It just depends on how it's allocated out across. So more to come on that. Mr. Sexton, Director of Technology, is working on putting together the list of items and materials that would apply to the grant and then will work collaboratively to get it sent into ODE and move forward with getting those funds established. So more to come on those. The other item that I have is news that I'm very excited to share with you. Once again, the treasurer's department and the Olentangie Local School District has been awarded their Certificate of Achievement and for excellent financial reporting from GFOA. GFOA is the Government Finance Officers Association. They're located in, across the United States and Canada. And this certificate is awarded for 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or CAFR. I don't have any other anacronyms I can throw in there. But the award is issued based upon judgment and from an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating constructive spirit of full disclosure and to clearly communicate its financial story and motive potential users, excuse me, and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFR. The CAFR, each year that we produce it and it is audited, we make sure that it's posted to the treasurer's webpage. So we have, I believe, at least five years of CAFRs posted. They're open to the public at any time. And the certificates are a part of that collaboration as they're issued a year behind with the audit of those financials. So we're very excited to have this award. I want to make sure I thank my staff for continuing their hard work and efforts to put this together, to make sure that we are not only compliance with our audits but compliance in our reporting as well. This is the 19th consecutive award, or consecutive time we have received this award for the district. So we're very proud of that and will continue all of our efforts to make sure we can meet those high standards. We do not have any item, action items for you tonight. We are looking to bring those forward to you on the 27th, which, again, will include some financials, appropriation updates, and so forth. But knowing that, are there any questions I can answer for you today?
I have a congratulations.
Thank you.
On your CAFR. Does going through the levy cycle help you with that? Because there's a lot of detail, I think, because of our levy issues.
Yes. You know, I think there's a lot of detail, not only in the levy, but when you think about the debits and the credits and the reporting and building the CAFR reports, there's also a large section of statistics. And fortunately or unfortunately, I'm not really sure how, depends on your outlook, I suppose, as we sell bonds and we go to the market with debt, we are constantly updating statistics. So it's not only coming forward in the CAFR reporting, but also in our debt reporting as well. So, not that we want to continue to have debt, but it's another place where we, where we're collecting information and making sure that we can report it out effectively to the community. Thank you.
Congratulations. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I'll let you get back to your seat. And then I will ask if we have any public participation.
Yes, we do. Would you like to read the rules or do you want me to state those for the record?
I don't have the rules in front of me. If you would, I would appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely. So for the community who is watching, public participation per our policy is five minutes per individual for a total of 30 minutes in a given meeting. Mrs. Davis, our Communications Director, has been taking the public participation remotely via email. And I believe we have timestamped records at this time. And she will read those as we have time for that session. I will indicate when you've gone, about five minutes if you have longer participation than others, but we'll also give you a 15-minute warning as you proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening.
Please go ahead.
We have 14 public participants and I think we should be able to get through those. So, starting with Rich Lyon, 548 Cricket Run Road, Lewis Center. "When the initial restart was announced, five days were planned with enhanced safety and sanitation. However, you came back and changed it to hybrid model. What was that decision based off? Is there some type of predictive model or formula that the school board and Board of Health is utilizing? Was this a suggestion from the Board of Health? All the data coming in shows this virus is not that deadly to children. Cases are declining, parents can make informed decisions. Why shouldn't they be afforded the option of five days a week? Will five days be added back in the middle of a quarter of deemed safe? The hybrid model robs my child regardless of what you say. The stay-at-home days will be a joke. There is no teacher, so they self-teach. Basically, give them homework. As a district that excels, I feel more should be done to try..." As a district that excels, I feel more should be done to try and enhance the learning opportunities. Additionally, what role has the teachers' union played in these decisions? Erica Stewart, 506 White Fawn Run, Delaware, Ohio. I would like to voice my support for the current school opening plan on the hybrid schedule. I feel strongly that this gives the school and the teachers the best chance to enforce the required restrictions without hindering their ability to provide the quality education that we've come to expect from Olentangie. I am confident that with the smaller class sizes and great student-to-teacher ratios, the kids will be able to cover a lot more material in their time together. I have no doubt that the teachers and staff are working very hard to make the school day as fun and productive as possible, and I trust them with the health and safety of my children. Thank you for all that you are doing to get us to a place where we, when we can open safely at five days a week. Chad and Mary Miller, 2148 Woodlands Place, Powell, Ohio. Dear school board members, I want to strongly encourage you to keep the existing plan in place. Cancel sports and activities if you must, but please keep some in-person schooling in place. We understand that no plan is free of risk, but this is truly the best option for us. While teachers did the best they could in the spring, virtual schooling did not go well for us. We have a very active social fifth-grade girl who is an only child. The lack of socialization and interaction with friends and her teacher has been fairly traumatic. She craves structure and normalcy and does not learn well without guidance. I'm not sure any elementary-age students should be expected to. I'm very concerned that she will be behind entering middle school as a result of this pandemic, even in the best of circumstances. Her academic and social-emotional growth have most definitely taken a hit already, and I'm very concerned about what another year of virtual learning would do. In addition, as two working parents, we do not have the time or ability to serve as her teachers while maintaining our employment. Please seriously consider the unseen consequences of the decision you are making. Also, consider the possibility that what you are doing to mitigate the virus might be enough. There may not be massive outbreaks in the schools. We don't hear many people say this in our fear-based COVID society, but maybe it will be okay. William Nimmo, 7944 Fargo Lane, Delaware, Ohio. Thank you for implementing hybrid schooling. It reduces risk for those with high-risk family members and lets the kids still have some vital in-classroom education. If the board decides to change Level Two so that it is no longer hybrid, please consider allowing parents to switch to C D L if that change is made. That was a key decision, make, a key decision-making criteria for us, and I expect many others. I apologize to anybody whose names I'm butchering. Suzanne Coff, 539 Retreat Lane, Powell, Ohio. I am writing to express my opinion that Olentangie schools should resume with five days a week of school for those that wish to attend. Those that want to do remote learning should be allowed that option. Coronavirus cases in Delaware County are down. If social distancing and the students and teachers wear masks, then there is no reason not to have a five-day-a-week in-school schedule. I have a sixth grader going into Liberty Middle, and he was devastated when he learned he wouldn't be going back to school full-time. These kids need to be in school. They need to be with their peers, and they need to be in an educational environment full-time. It is detrimental to their emotional well-being as well as their education. Basically, they have not had any adequate educational teaching since March. It's time to start living again and bring back some normalcy during these unprecedented times. Our children want to go back to school. They want to start living. Diane Hall, 356 Woodard Place, Powell, Ohio. If decisions for return to school are based on science and numbers, Olentangie should be going back full-time. The fact that the district directly tied their decisions to Ohio's Public Health Advisory map was a cop-out. Look at the facts yourself and reintroduce your plan for a full return to school by mid-September, after your hybrid start. Get creative to reduce overcrowded classrooms by live streaming to overflow rooms within the school, utilizing gyms, cafeterias, common areas, changing bell schedules to create out-of-sink scenarios to improve social distancing, and think outside of the box. Full-time, in-person learning can be done safely with a little extra effort and some creative ideas. Our students deserve it. Brian Grishell, 1097 Ballmorel Drive, Delaware, Ohio. I have yet to understand why O L S D did not decide to go back to five-day classroom schooling after Delaware County moved back to yellow status with the state. I just found out that Lima City Schools went back to school today, and they are full-time in the classroom. Allen County, which they are located in, was at Level Three as of last week and is the county that was close to purple a few weeks ago. New Albany Schools recently voted to have five days a week in-person classes, and there are other school districts as well doing the same. Delaware County is down to 165 active cases from 288 cases a couple weeks ago, per the CDC. The state of Ohio has had zero deaths from COVID for anyone aged 24 or less. Zero. There have been multiple articles published about the benefits to children being in the classroom five days a week and the impacts to them when they are not. It is bad enough they have had to spend most of the summer cooped up in their houses because of all of the safety recommendations. Now you're asking them to stay home two to three days a week to complete online learning? Even the lieutenant governor of the state has been quoted as saying that he believes kids need to be in school, and it can be done safely and securely. If there are parents that do not want their kids to do five days a week, then they can choose the online virtual-only option. I think you also have to consider that once kids do go back to their school buildings, there will probably be a few cases of COVID that pop up. It's probably inevitable. However, I hope and pray that when and if that happens, the panic button is not sounded, and there is an immediate change to all online learning. My son is on an I E P and is entering the eighth grade, and he struggled being at home at the end of the last school year. He needs to be in class with his teachers, aide, and intervention specialist in order to make progress towards his goals. I hope you will reconsider the plans for the start of school. Also from Brian Grishell, a second submission. Information provided around current state of Ohio health information taken directly from state website, the state's website. The local health department are not using all available data to provide their recommendations. Additionally, Ohio's R T is under .95 since June 28th, top 10 best in country. Dewine State Goal, under 1.0. Our test positivity rate has been under 5% for the past week and has never gone above 6.8 since we increased testing in May. Dewine and World Health Goal, 5% or under. Share all the data. By @DavePetno. 812 Ohio COVID-19 Dashboards. Dashboard A, net new cases have been negative for the past 12 days and 14 of the last 16. All we hear from the media is reported cases, which are a batch of backlog data. Do they ever report the net new, which are new, less recovered? How about the count of currently active cases? Dashboard B. Use the actual data from the official CSV file on the Ohio COVID-19 site. Scroll down the new cases by onset column, and you will see that you have to go down 23 days before you find a total exceeding the 1,422 that was reported new cases from Carlin Smith, 4290 Village Club Drive, Powell, Ohio. We demand five days of in-school learning. There are educational standards that the Ohio Department of Education has set, as well as O L S D for our children. These standards are impossible to achieve when students have to learn online, go hybrid, and basically have a repeat of spring, of busy work the two to three days a week they are not in school. This is not quality education that we move to Olentangie for. We have answered your cries when you needed levies passed. We ask that you hear our voices and meet our needs. We need you as leaders to hear those families with kids who have I E Ps and 504s. Students with these needs cannot reach the level of care and additional help they need online. We are not fearful of sending our kids full-time. And based on the numbers in Delaware County, you should not be fearful to make the decision to allow our kids to enter those buildings every day. We need leadership to turn off the TV and really listen to the experts and the real data like the CDC and AAP recommending kids go back for mental health reasons, for our next generation being able to lead this country when we no longer can. The hardship this puts on working parents whose elementary and middle school kids who will be home, at home two to three days a week, do they quit their jobs? You think their bosses will just allow them to work remotely? It doesn't work that way. Middle schoolers and high schoolers with no parental supervision, with increased exposure to drugs, vaping, alcohol, and sex, depression, anxiety, suicide, which we've seen too many times in our district. And we need our sports, sense of community, hard work, discipline, mentors, father figures. So many lessons these kids learn that they will take with them for 50 to 60 years. Please do the right thing for our kids and send open Olentangie 100%. Maureen Botos, 4737 Sybil Court, Powell, Ohio. Dear school board members, I'm writing in support of opening our schools full-time five days a week. I'm positive that this can be done safely and by the standard set forth by the CDC. Having children in school five days gives them the consistency of curriculum and schedule. When children are not in school on the off days with the hybrid program, they will be exposed, or exposing, a whole different group of the population. Please keep them in school so it limits their contacts. We all want what's best for all children and students' parents that feel like their children will do better at home with complete distance learning, have that opportunity. We just ask that our children that flourish in the classroom be given the same opportunity. Jennifer Foight, 2231 Tucker Trail, Lewis Center, Ohio. First, thank you for the tireless efforts of this board, the faculty and staff have made to ensure a safe return to school for our students. I'm sending this email to express my concern that fear over facts may lead to the cancellation or postponement of fall sports, music, and extracurricular activities. I ask you as a parent of an Orange High School senior and an Orange sixth grader to please advocate on our behalf to continue our fall sports, music, and extracurricular programs. Our students benefit substantially from the team-building, leadership, and creative expression these programs provide. Please advocate on our behalf that these programs continue. I don't dispute that the COVID virus is serious. However, the squashing of hopes and the spirit of our student body, especially our graduating seniors, could prove far more harmful in the long term. Please take this opportunity to teach our students that with resilience and some creative problem-solving, we can find a way to continue as one Olentangie, not only in the classroom, but on the playing fields, within the marching band, clubs, and organizations that make us an Olentangie family. James and Rachel Lawton, Autumn Applesauce Drive, Lewis Center, Ohio. Good evening. We are urging the board to revise the current back-to-school plan to allow our students the option to return to school for full-time in-person attendance and to make any transition decisions to hybrid or fully remote learning based on local data within our county, not the flawed public health advisory system. This is similar to the changes that were recently implemented by the New Albany Plain Local School District at an emergency meeting held last Friday on August 7th. In-person education is absolutely essential for our children and is not replaced by the current hybrid model that is being offered. Experts at the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC agree that it is critical for our kids to return to face-to-face learning as schools are fundamental to child and adolescent development and well-being. CDC Director Dr. Robert Redfield testified again on July 31st that it is in the best interest of public health and students to return to quality face-to-face education. He also discussed the feelings of isolation that distance learning causes and how this is leading to an increase in negative outcomes for our children, like depression, drug overdoses, and even suicide. He emphasized that opening schools is not an economic versus public health decision, it is a public health versus public health decision, and children must be able to return to school. We saw these negative outcomes firsthand as our daughter, who was in the third grade last year, was forced to finish the last few months of the school year remotely. Every week that went by, she became more withdrawn and despondent. Virtual learning environments do not work well for all learners, but are especially problematic for elementary students and those who need additional support to succeed academically. Experts agree that it is both safe and advisable to let our children return to in-person learning. Further, the hybrid model will not reduce risk, and many would argue that it is actually more risky than full-time attendance. This is because the children of working parents will need to go to some sort of daycare option on their remote learning days. These children will then be interacting with an even larger peer group from other neighborhoods and schools that they wouldn't otherwise have been exposed to. In closing, we are again strongly urging the O L S D to adopt a plan that allows our children to return to full-time in-person attendance. This is the best way forward for our children and will ensure that they receive the quality education they deserve. As always, we appreciate your time and consideration of the issues we have raised. Janine King, 4584 Grayson Drive, Powell, Ohio. My name is Janine King. I have a sophomore, seventh grader, and second grader. We are so upset by the decision to go hybrid. My hope is that the board will reconsider and not just take into account opinions, but will instead take into account facts. The hospitalizations in Delaware County dropped to zero today. Why are we not going back five days? I was listening to a priest today talking about COVID and the fears that surround it. This was my favorite quote. "Living is risky, but to those who have forgotten that the point of living is not to merely just stay alive, put aside the fear, embrace the risk, and live in hope. To stop risking is to stop really living, and that will destroy life long before it's actually really over." End quote. By making the decision not to go back five days per week, hopes and dreams are being destroyed. There is an option for those parents who are fearful. For those who want to return, let them return five days.
You have 10 minutes, Mrs. Davis?
I'm on the last one. Jason Morgan, 5299 Harbor Point Drive, Galena, Ohio. Thank you for your leadership and constant effort in mitigating the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic in our schools. I am a parent, a teacher's spouse, and a taxpayer in O L S D. I was very disappointed to see the latest move by the district to a hybrid model of in-school education while Delaware County is a Level Two. The goal of the school district should be focused on providing the best education possible for our kids and not directly tied to a statewide arbitrary data system. The current plan will guarantee our kids a subpar education without a guarantee of safety. It is just not possible to achieve the educational, social, and mental growth necessary by attending school part-time. The only way to provide the best education possible is by getting our kids in school every day. The consequences of denying our kids an in-school full-time education will far outweigh the effects of the current pandemic. I implore you to approve a plan that places an emphasis on getting our kids back in school full-time without being tied to the county emergency level. Our kids, our teachers, and our parents deserve it. Thank you again.
Thank you for reading those, Mrs. Davis.
Just so everybody knows, at the last minute, we had over 100 people who submitted stuff, and we got all those, they were scanned in and they were emailed to us. So if, at the last meeting, yours didn't get read, they were all sent to us.
Correct. And you will also receive all these electronically as well, even though we got through them all.
Thank you. We have one discussion item this evening. Welcome back to the podium, Dr. Feddy. This will be the second reading of our board policy updates.
Good evening again. Presenting the second reading of policy updates. We are deleting our sexual violence policy to replace it with the new nondiscrimination on the basis of sex in the district programs or activities policy, as required by federal law, and we have a new policy on the use of face masks and coverings. And since we did the first reading... And since we did the first reading, Niola, who is our board policy provider, released a face mask policy. So we took the opportunity to review their version, and there's a couple changes I want to point out to you in the second that are not necessarily substantive, but just added some clarity in some areas. One, we added the paragraph that the face masks and shields will be provided to district employees, but that they are able to wear their own. We also expanded on what goes into an exception to the policy when an exception is needed. And then also, we separated a section on face shields specifically to bring greater clarity to when a face mask versus a face shield is appropriate. Do you have any questions on these policies?
No, thank you.
It's the longest policy presentation he's ever made.
Seriously.
Okay, so, since we had no questions, I will now entertain a motion for our board action item A to approve board policy updates. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien and Mr. King. Please call the roll. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, will you please present your superintendent action items?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to present superintendent action items A through D for approval.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fiesel and Mr. King. Please call the roll. Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you. And finally, before we, we're going to go into executive session, before we do that, I will let the public know that we will only return to this room to adjourn. So with that, may I have a motion to move into executive session as permitted by Section 121.22, the Ohio Revised Code to Consider Employment of Public Employees. So moved. Second. Thank you, Mrs. Fiesel and Dr. Weiss. Please call the roll. Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you. Know this, and it was in your report.
August 27.
Well, it was in yours, Mrs. Hatfield, because you're presenting financials, so. One more number to remember. Yes. The days just don't have the same meaning that they once did.
Mrs. Patrick.
Okay, it is 9:52 PM and I will entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, was that Dave and Julie?
No.
Or no, Lakeisha and...
Sure.
Okay, we'll put Lakeisha and Dave, how about that?
Sure.
Okay. All right, I'll... Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Oh, it was supposed to be Dr. Wise. Dr. Wise, yes. Mrs. Beazel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick, yes. Okay, so we are adjourned at 9:53.